I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, another God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I move we approve the agenda. Oh, sorry. Oh, with following the additional certified and last by personnel actually. There's been a motion to by Jean to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second? Second by Dana. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. At this time, I will open the budget hearing for the 2015-16 budget. If there are anyone who would like to speak with regard to the budget. And board members. I would entertain a motion to close the budget hearing. I move that we close the budget hearing. Is there a second? Second by Jennifer. All those in favor of closing the budget hearing, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve the 2015-16 budget as presented. I'd like to move to approve the 2015-16 budget as presented. Is there a second? Second by Jennifer. Are there any comments with regard to the budget as presented? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. We got the budget. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Karen Burton. I believe you're here with some great students. If you want to come over here with your students, that would be great.
Have some of the students that participated in the National FCC LA competitions in Washington DC. And we have three of the students that are seniors and are graduated and off to college. So, Helmer Guero went ahead and participated in the fashion design and he received a gold at National. And Rosa Morello, she competed at Nationals in clothing construction and received a gold. And Marissa was on the culinary team with Gustavo and Jason. So I'm going to have Jason tell a little, or Gustavo tell a little bit about the culinary competition.
So what we did, we had, they gave us three recipes and we had to practice them all because when we got there, they were going to tell us which one we had to do. So basically, the recipe we did was like chicken mustard with rice pilaf and broccoli. And our dessert was an apple trifle. And the event was pretty cool. It was weird because we were first and we didn't really have a chance to see how other people did. So, I thought we did pretty good, but we got a bronze medal.
What'd you learn from their experience?
That we need to keep track of time more better because we went over in time by a couple of seconds.
Yeah, like, timing is very critical. Once they're five minutes over time, they're disqualified, but they were just a couple of seconds over. So, did well. They basically had the one hour to prepare the entire menu that they have and do their lab plan and present two identical meals for that. So, and they did receive a bronze. And then Tanya Cisneros did the food innovation, so she's going to tell you a little bit about it.
Okay, so, basically, it was to create my own recipe, to test it with five people and then with 10 people in a focus group of children that required that that like fitted to the healthy guidelines. And so I did that and I had to create the own packaging for both of them, which was basically, I made a crepe, healthy meal, the gold, what's the name of it? And I named my crepe like that and a yogurt parfait. I, I did, what was it called? I did several
Taste tests.
Yeah, taste tests. And so based on that, they gave me their advices and what changes I could make. And so I have to redo it again, all over again. So it's approved, then, you know.
Then she also, after she did the entire project, she had to present a storyboard explaining the entire project, how she used safety standards. She had to create the nutrition facts label for both, all of her products and then do an oral presentation about the entire project.
Yeah.
She worked quite many hours on this as students did with culinary, with the practice as well. So, what would you say was your greatest learning experience?
I learned, like, what would it be like to work on a, on a, what was it, a kitchen? Taste kitchen, that's right. And I learned how to make my nutritional facts, labels, and my own packaging, how to do some spreadsheets and calculate all of the nutrients on them. It was really awesome.
And she did very well. She received a gold in National as well. And so Paola did the new
See if you remember.
National programs in action.
Yes. What I did was specifically in the facts category, which is they promote distracted driving and any type of activity that includes you distracted driving. So, they don't promote it, they promote this stuff of it. And my, I was texting and driving and distracted driving in general was really personal to me. So me, I personally decided to do Project Overlap. And I did many events in the school where we did tie dye shirt and we partnered with AT&amp;T. And then we had students pledge. We did safe night, seatbelt checks. We helped push Ms. Officer Underin them to tell, like, we would report everything that had to do with distracted driving. And students hated us for a good three months. But it was really fun. I learned that peers need to get off their cell phone and they need to focus on the road. But I did learn how to interact with my elders more and how well, I learned a lot of leadership skills and being in DC was extremely fun. I was, I didn't get a gold, which I was hoping to. I got a silver, but it was still an honor to represent Kansas in the program I was in since it's really, what's the word? Small, there was a small amount of students that represented that program. So it was definitely an honor to represent Garden City and Kansas in general. So I had a lot of fun and I'm hoping this year we'll make it back to Nationals.
The students that have completed, competed in food innovations and the culinary have every year that we have participated, we've won state and have been able to go on to Nationals. So, it's always a different group of students. So, I think that says a lot for their determination and goals and setting that forth. So, we're looking forward to another great year. So, do you have any questions for us?
What years are you right now?
I'm a senior.
Senior. How old are you? Yeah. You'll be carrying a lot of FCC online this year, hopefully.
As I mentioned, Jason and Marissa were on the culinary team. Jason is a senior this year. He had to work this evening and Marissa's graduated and the other two students have also graduated. So, we had seven students total compete at Nationals. Thank you.
Approximately how many students competed in this National event?
In the National event? I think there were 8,000 students at Nationals in Washington DC.
Really pretty big deal.
Yes.
Thank you. If I may say, I've had the honor or pleasure of having a couple of events chaired by Karen's classes. And it just goes to show your amazing leadership and work with students and thank you. Looking forward to September 24th. I'd love to hear you guys' opinion on that.
Yes, we were talking about that today.
Well, thank you very much. Come back.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Do what?
Should we talk a little bit?
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Jennifer. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. And I have a question, Dr. Carlin. Do we want to, I see our guests are up here. Are we good to stay along the agenda?
Yeah, how long will it? I told Matt probably about 6.1.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mia, do you want to give us an update on?
It's a team effort here. We're actually going to be talking about a couple of different committees. With Dr. Carlin and the new leadership team, we've done a little bit of changing or tweaking or streamlining some committees that were existing and then some that might be newer change. So we kind of wanted to go over what those look like. And so we're going to split up how we talked about those today. And I'll be the first one to go to discuss SAC. SAC stands for Superintendent's Advisory Council. And in the past, that was made up of primarily all the district-wide principals, district-wide administrators here at the ESC and then administrators that are not based at the ESC such as Transportation Director and Chuck Hobbie at plant facilities. And those people are still a part of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, but we are making a couple of changes to how that looks. Let me see, I'm going off memory today, so. First of all, the purpose of the council is to do what it says, advise or provide an advisory support to the superintendent. But it's also reciprocal in nature. So, the principals and such can give feedback to the superintendent, but the superintendent can also use that time to provide support such as professional development, leadership opportunities for those at the district level and the principal building level. So that's kind of the purpose. We are changing the format of SAC a little bit from past years. It used to be SAC met twice a month on Tuesday mornings. And what happened is that pulled every principal out of their building for that two hours or two and a half hours to meet. And as you know, we've reduced administrative staff some so that put a little more pressure on being out of the buildings. The high school, it was impossible to get all of those principals out of the high school every Tuesday morning, so a lot of them would miss out. So we're experimenting with a little bit of change to the format. We're going to meet every other, one Wednesday a month from 4:00, is it 4:15 to 5:45? And that is going to model kind of a PLC format. And only administrators who have interest in the topic will attend. So for example, our first SAC PLC focused on discipline data. So like a PLC, we took data, we discussed the data, then we looked at trends in the data with discipline across the schools, across the district. What additional training do we as principals need to calibrate that information, to make it more consistent? What do we need to do with it? Similar to what a teacher would do at a PLC, looking at student data. We did that with data that would tend to administration. Then the next meeting, which will be held on Tuesday mornings, will be more of that advisory focus. Dr. Carlin will lead the agenda. We're going to be doing some celebrations of that, look at things that are happening in the buildings that are innovative. But again, this is just a way for principals and administrators to network and collaborate a couple of times a month. Any questions about SAC?
Does that need to be on Tuesday before the Wednesday meeting?
No, it's going to fall about every other week we have a meeting. So we had a meeting last Wednesday and then we'll have a meeting next Tuesday. So there's about two weeks, about every two weeks we'll have a meeting.
It's a once a month meeting or?
Once a month on Wednesdays, once a month on Tuesdays.
I was thinking of this one. Was it every week?
No, yes. Any other questions about SAC? All right, we'll move on.
The next we're looking at is Professional Development Council. In the past few years, I've been the Professional Development and Curriculum Council. We've decided we really need to separate those two things because with the curriculum, we really want to make sure we have good representation and enough people on those things to do it. And with the PD Council, it was only involving six teachers as far as voting members. We didn't feel like there was probably enough representation when you start to look at curriculum. So we decided to separate the two, but we do need to have, required by state statute, to have a Professional Development Council. So the PD Council helps with designing, recommending, approving professional development activities for the district and for buildings. So that's one of their major responsibilities. And we have to follow the policies and procedures that are established by the state. And we have to carry them out at the district level, make sure that we're providing professional development points appropriately to staff. And then, of course, we have to communicate this not only to the administration, but to the teachers on what's appropriate, what's approved, those types of things. And then we're also there as a resource. And if somebody has concerns about what they've been approved for for professional development points, they can bring that to the council for clarification or to express their concerns. And we can help, you know, dig into that and see if there's a reason to give points or to not give points for professional development. All that, of course, applies to teachers getting relicensure. They comply those points to, you know, renewing their certificate as that time comes due. There are voting members in this, and again, there are six teachers. Two at the elementary level, two at the intermediate middle together, and two high school. And then we have some non-voting members. We have a secretary, the CET coordinator, secondary director, elementary education director, and the assistant superintendent are the members. What we do at that format is we have to meet once annually to be trained. We did that two weeks ago. About two and a half hours. Southwest Plains Regional Service Center provided the trainer to us and so she went through all of those, proved, you know, how to be a council member and what we have to do, our responsibilities and those types of things. And then we meet once a month for about 4:00 to 5:30 and all those dates are already established and put into place. And that's where we'll review PDC points, professional development points, and take care of any other issues that might come up at that time.
Can you talk just briefly about points? What are the points?
There are a couple of different ways to get points. You can get knowledge points. Or like I go to an in-service and attend that, I'm going to get some knowledge. And then hopefully I come back and apply it in my job. And so I get, I get one point for each hour of the knowledge points. And I can come back and if I apply that, I can double my points. I have to have proof of applying that. And then the last level of PDC points is impact, proving that what I've learned, what I've applied, has an impact. And those then triples. Triples. So you can get quite a few points if you come back and really do all those things. And then there's also service to professional points. And those are one point for each hour that you would do that.
The state's giving you the points? Who giving you the points?
The attendance at the in-service, you know, how you earn the points. The PD Council approves them at the district level. And then they go to the state and that person might use those points to recertify.
So you need the points to be a part of the council?
To recertify. I mean, you can do college credits, but you can also do it through professional development points.
Just trying to understand the points and why you need them.
The council is the approving body of the teachers who are requesting points.
But you don't have to have the points necessarily. Hopefully you're doing any of your teaching.
Authority wanting a car or something. Bad 100 points.
100 points, that's pretty good.
Who chooses the committee members for this?
They are elected through, there's an application process and they're in, when they're building. Teachers elect them.
But they're not on a privileged building?
No. This is my first time doing it, so I'm not, and I
Me too, that's why it's not
Yeah, inherited, so I don't
And it's on rotation, so, you know, everybody goes off every year. So, I think this year we have two that we have doing that, the teachers go.
And they do that in the spring semester. I think we have, I know we have one rolling off this next year, maybe two.
So then is it just that, knowing that, that your pockets, it just, not knowing that most part is like all the teachers?
All the teachers.
Other questions?
Do teachers give input in terms of what kinds of programs? They would like, for example, you all designed for them, recommend. Do teachers at large?
Sure, teachers can submit if they want to do, present to other staff, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm just saying, can they have input in terms of what kind of professional development?
Yes, absolutely.
I think at one point they were also looking at iTunes, do iTunes University as well. So, but they, that was very, they were going through, they were just starting that because it was just first available when I was on the council at one point. And there was a strict format, form to fill out, explaining why you thought it would be appropriate for what it is that you were doing to get the points. And the council had to pre-approve that, pre-approve that too. So there's a lot of different ways to get the points.
Especially the board, these time hours, teachers have the opportunity to try to find something that's going to meet their needs as a teacher. What they might need is different than other teachers.
For instance, one of the things we do is we've done sign language class, you know, through my department. We've done interpreter training. We have teachers right now that were working on the Dynamic Learning Maps, which is our alternative assessment. We have to do a lot of training with that prior to them doing that. So, all those things go through my learning plan and teachers get points for those, you know, and that he uses release hours, that he uses for the relicensure. But just depending on what they need is what we develop for them.
Okay, the last committee I'd like to talk about is one that we're newly forming. And this is our Curriculum Council, District MTS S Council. Several years ago, we combined Curriculum Council with Staff Development Council and this has been done years ago. But what this council became, what the Professional Development Council became, was just looking at points, counting points. And we might have looked at a little bit of curriculum, course changes, mostly at a high school. But that's about all the curriculum work that that committee did. Before the District MTS S Committee, we started working with MTS S. And at that point, SAC and MTS S had become a distinction of each other where we had principals and instructional coaches looking at the textbooks, looking at curriculum changes, looking at different curriculum to approve. But what we're doing here is going to be better because we're going to be able to add new teachers to the MTS S. I'm not going to read everything, but part of what this committee will do is they're going to recommend the course changes. You guys will have a final approval on it. They're going to recommend textbook adoptions, recommend assessment practices. And again, you're going to have a final approval on that. And just to kind of show you what that looks like, six non-voting members, which will be four district administrators and two board members, 24 voting members. And what we're hoping to accomplish with this team is that we have a cross-section of principals, teachers from all four levels. What we want, what we originally want to do is bring, like if we have a social studies adoption, we want the social studies experts in the district to look at that. They're going to do all the research, they're going to align it with standards, and they're going to propose the very best textbook that meets the needs of the district. They're going to take that to the Curriculum Council for their recommendation, which will ultimately come to you. So we're hoping that by the time it comes to you, this process is going to be well vetted with that group, knowing, you should have confidence that the experts in the field have looked at that and have done a very nice job in bringing the best product to you. Again, they're going to be selected. We have that out right now as an application. We've asked people to apply for that. And then the Superintendent's Leadership Team will take a look at those members that created. And again, it's not, everybody's not going to go off the same here. It's going to be three-year, limited terms. Another committee that we have is our Transformation Committee, which is teacher-led, teacher-powered. This is a committee that was formed really from the model schools movement. These teachers had the opportunity to hear Dr. Sue Sackins. She took a low-performing school in Massachusetts to one of the highest schools there. And some of the things that she did was to systemize her processes. For instance, if there was a strategy happening in one classroom that was successful, every teacher used that strategy so kids didn't have to think about the different strategies or technicalities for each teacher. If you were doing this strategy in this classroom, you're going to do it the same way in the other classroom. And a good example of that in the district, this committee has created a RACE strategy. And we have cases where we probably could put about that. The RACE strategy is a strategy for answering a question. And from pre-K to 12th grade, they're working on the RACE strategy. But we're trying to morph that group in with this Curriculum Council so that those experts, those teacher experts, will be part of this process. Any questions?
How are you recruiting parents to be on like this?
We're going to be talking with principals, trying to do the best thinking about side council members to be on this committee. Because we definitely want parents on this.
And on the 24 voting people, how many, how many will those be teachers? How many of those are principals? Eight, eight, eight?
Team teachers, three principals, and three principals. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, that leads us to our unfinished business. Matt, would you like to come up?
What's up? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, members on board. Dr. Carlin, earlier this year, city staff presented to you on our neighborhood revitalization program, we recommended some changes that at the time we thought were important to us, were important to the continuation of that program. During that presentation and subsequent discussions that I've had with Dr. Carlin, you all asked some very good questions and I think that's caused us to go back and look at all the variables. There are several that you saw from the presentation in that program. And I think our recommendation, well, I'll get to the recommendation here a little bit. In addition to that, there was also quite a bit of discussion about the other property tax, growth tools, and use in the community. And then finally, there was discussion sort of about the state of school finance in Kansas in general and how that impacts the system. So, last week I provided to the district a large packet of information and it really wasn't intended to teach you when the fire hose. It was really more to be a resource moving forward. I think all of those are sort of what I would consider primary source. I think all of those are sort of what I would consider primary sources for those development tools. And may, may spur some additional questions that maybe we can try to be available to you tonight to answer. We also identified that each of those tools have general program overview, how the tools are used, and some proposed next steps sort of coming out of that discussion that you had with city staff earlier that we reviewed and subsequently had with Dr. Carlin. So kind of moving towards those steps and back to the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, we'd really like to get together a working team of staff and maybe some board representation of the more taxing entities that are the partners in the original and are local in the early two thousands to, and really just kind of vet every one of those variables and, you know, see if there's a tool that works better for the next ten years, given the context that we're in right now. Not just you, but, but us as well and accounting in the college. In some follow-up discussions, it really doesn't seem feasible to come back prior to the end of next session, so I would expect that best case scenario, we may be talking about this early next summer, certainly not knowing when the session's going to end. If it ends sooner than later or more on time than it was this year, that does leave us a little bit of a window before both of us for adopting budgets and those types of things. But certainly the working group could get, get together much sooner than that and start playing with some of those variables, seeing what, what it looks like if you reduce the number of years or you shrink the geographic boundaries or what is the real investment that's been made in foregone revenue and how much of that is rolling off. And do some deeper analysis of all the tools presented to you. That one's the oldest. It wasn't a super powerful tool, but it was the only tool we had for several years up until maybe the last four. So that's our recommendation on that. Regarding RHID, I know you have consideration of the current project on your agenda today that preserves a Prairie Ridge Phase Three, a project that's utilized the RHID tool on the first two phases of its project that are, have requested and received commission approval, which started with a thirty-day clock and you all are giving consideration of that matter within that thirty-day clock as, as you have a right to. In our pack of information, we just tried to provide some additional information on this tool about the projects, projects that's been used on, how those projects and the quantity of units approved matches to the overall number of units built in Garden City. It's our observation, it's my professional opinion, that the projects listed that use the RHID tool would not have developed in, or in a minimum one or two may have developed much slower or in much smaller increments. But by and large, those projects wouldn't have occurred without the RHID tool, simply no other way to cover the cost of infrastructure alone. Twenty years ago, there was some use of the special assessment tool. And while not super popular, if you were the one paying the special assessment on your tax bill, it at least covered that infrastructure cost. Then we moved into an era where the developer themselves could no longer take on that, that risk to carry that, that financing over whatever it was a two-year period. And so the city began to, in the early two thousands and maybe late nineteen nineties, assume that risk on behalf of the developer. Even assuming the risk and recovering through specials, the costs of infrastructure and what it took became so great, really the special assessment tool was not viable. It drives the overall cost of the monthly payment for anything that's developed way beyond what the consumer market would say. Really, case in point, the reason there was no units other than custom-built units and some infill using the Neighborhood Revitalization Program developed between the year two thousand and up until two thousand eight or even two thousand, well, no longer than that, almost two thousand and ten. Nearly a decade of stagnation. Now, the first part of that stagnation really didn't hurt us because we had a housing flood resulting from a ton of anger fire. But by two thousand five, two thousand six, the demand existed. We, we were able to, a study conducted in two thousand nine and I think maybe hitting the streets in two thousand ten showed that that demand was between six hundred and seven hundred units immediately beyond dealing demand of sixty to seventy a year. That was, that, that study was conducted again two years later showing similar numbers. And then most recently completed in the late two thousand fourteen and presented to the community in early spring this year, again ratifying that demand, acknowledging that it had dipped into a little bit or dug into a little bit, but certainly not enough to keep pace with the two or the four years that had passed, let alone the original need that was cited. Our recommendation on RHID is really to, and I appreciate Dr. Carlin's willingness to, to talk on, on this and sort of process, taking out the context of the immediate project you have on your agenda, just RHID in general. The original intent of the program was, one, this is a powerful tool. This overnight became the most powerful housing development tool we had. It demands that type of scrutiny and question asking and review. Our original design was, that we proposed to the four entities and at the time, our working group was in agreeance that this is how it would work. It's annually that the, the tool, the housing development that occurred in, in the area that would be reviewed and it would be held up by category in light of the housing needs assessment, which is this third-party review of what our housing needs were. And we would collectively come to some decision through review of objective data. Sort of subjective recommendation, but.